Good afternoon and welcome to the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. I'm Larissa McKelvey Day, Chair of the Planning Commission. I will now call the meeting to order. I'd like to do something a little different and share, it is with a heavy heart that we share the passing of a dedicated member of the Salinas Fire Department, fire engineer and IAFF Local One Two Seven Zero President Joshua Hostetter, passed unexpectedly on the evening of September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are grateful for his twenty-three years of dedicated service to the Salinas Fire Department and our community. He was also the two thousand and twenty-five Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year. Our hearts are with his family, colleagues, and friends. And so before we do the flag, so I'd like to stand and then just for a moment of silence and then we'll go into the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
For Zoom webinar participation, it is available for the members of the public. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the posted agenda on the city website. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Rakamora?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Commissioner Meeks?
Here.
Commissioner Ruck?
Here.
And we have Commissioners Almanzalarrios, Commissioner Purnell, absent.
Thank you. May we now have staff introductions?
Mayor Robles, administrative aide.
Lisa Brinton, Community Development Director.
Courtney Grossman, Planning Manager.
Son Fam Galardo, Senior Planner.
Jonathan Morrison, Senior Planner.
Grant Leonard, Planning Manager.
It does help if you speak in the mic so it's Zoom staff and everybody, it's recorded, I guess.
Jonathan Morrison, Senior Planner.
Good afternoon, Grant Leonard, Planning Manager.
Thank you. Now we have you on record. Okay, general public comments. Public comments generally limited to two minutes per speaker. The Chair may further limit the time for public comment depending on the agenda schedule. Are there any comments from the public regarding items not on today's agenda?
Hi, I'm Peter Zelay, North Salinas. I wanted to come and express some confusion as a citizen of the city regarding our planning for housing. So you guys are receiving a report on zoning, I think, today. And there is the Planning Commission, but there's also the Housing and Land Use Committee. And now there is a special committee that the mayor has set up, an ad hoc committee. And I'm not really sure how they all dovetail and how they all work together. And one of the members of the ad hoc committee was quoted in the paper saying that the special ad hoc committee would be dealing with zoning issues as well. Well, ad hoc committees are governed a little differently than standing committees in terms of transparency and notification of agendas and so forth. And so I'm confused. I do know that zoning and permitting are ways that municipalities can encourage housing. Housing obviously is a big issue for us. And I'm very curious to see how these three bodies interact with each other.
Thank you. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move along. Any Zoom participants, they may use the raise hand feature. Are there any Zoom participants?
No raised hands.
Okay, thank you. So consent, ID number two-five dash zero four zero zero, approval of minutes from September seventeenth. Wait, from September seventeenth? That should be from?
September third, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, from September third meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Rakamora?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Meeks?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Ruck?
Questions or comments?
And I have no questions or comments. Is there a motion and a second?
I approve the minutes from September third, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second.
With a motion from Commissioner Meeks and a second from Commissioner Ruck, we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rakamora?
Yes.
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruck?
Yes.
Chairperson McKelvey Day?
Yes. Motion passes. Administrative reports, ID number two-five dash four zero three, Administrative Report on the General Plan Update, Zoning Code Update, and Future Growth Area Tentative Map Applications. Courtney Grossman, Planning Manager, will introduce this item, followed by a presentation by Jonathan Moore, Senior Planner, and Son Fam Galardo, Senior Planner.
Thank you, Chair McKelvey Day. So today we're looking at an administrative report. We're going to talk about a couple of updates. One is the General Plan Update and the Zoning Code Update. And we're also going to take a look at what's coming down the pipeline in terms of the future growth area. We're going to take a look at the tentative map processing, which is currently happening in our office. There will be a PowerPoint presentation that will follow and show more details in that regard. Additionally, staff would like to extend this as an opportunity to the Planning Commission to help develop content for future study sessions. In this case, it's just an administrative report. But what we're looking at is putting together a series of study sessions. And some of the topics that could be included are items such as the current general plan, what it says, what it means, the zoning code, in terms of what it is and what it says. These are two thousand and two and two thousand and six documents, respectively. Sometimes it's good to know where you're going by knowing where you've been. In other words, we're embarking going forward with a new general plan and a new zoning code. Might be good to see exactly what we're having to, you know, to process under the regulations currently. We could look at the Subdivision Map Act and the subdivision regulations here at the city, SEQA processing, planning and zoning laws. These are just a couple of ideas that staff kind of put together. But we'd really like for the Planning Commission to help pitch in and give us some ideas and we can put together some packages going forward in the future. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jonathan and Son for a quick presentation on the aforementioned topics.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. I am still indeed Jonathan Moore, Senior Planner. Table, going through this kind of quick, but just wanted to give you an update on where we are in the General Plan Update process, we're in the zoning code process. We've got a lot of things kind of happening simultaneously here. And since our June joint study session, we received a formatted version of the draft general plan in August. And we're going through that document. Looks really cool, really great. And we're working through internal comments to make sure what we eventually put out to the public is as tight as it can be. Some of those comments involve some significant cross-departmental discussions. So we're aiming for October release. And we're also in October, so we're beginning back our first admin or internal drafts of the Climate Action Plan and the Environmental Impact Report that kind of covers all those documents. So I know this is a lengthy process, but we're excited by finally seeing a point where we have these documents in our hands and getting ready to put them out to the public. So we're really kind of coming towards the end here, even if that finish line is still a little ways in the future. We're also continuing our engagement with our economic development elements stakeholders. We got some comments from some of them. And I think some of them are probably going to give us some update on their efforts as well. So a lot of this fall really means it will be dedicated to reviewing, refining these documents, the general plan, the climate action plan, and the EIR, in order to make them ready for an eventual formal comment period release, which is kind of the step for, you know, we plan on doing a couple of rounds with at least the general plan to get public comment focused on that before we do the formal forty-five day comment period, which kind of triggers the start of like the, we're getting serious, well, getting And of course, in parallel, we're starting our zoning code update. And a new zoning code can also be kind of a lengthy process. So when the last comprehensive general plan update was completed in two thousand and two, it took four or five years for a new zoning code to be adopted following that. So we're going to try to get that done a little quicker this time. But we're also tackling it in phases so that we can make progress as we go. And the first phase is focused on compliance with all these new state laws. And one of the first actions as a possible study session is to have Placeworks, our consultant, come down and give a presentation on some of those new state laws and what cities are now obligated to do. And some of that's outlined in our housing element, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty-three. Placeworks is also doing some of the background, other background tasks, auditing the zoning code for other legal compliance things, looking at best practices from other jurisdictions we might want to consider in this process. And they're working with us on creating a public engagement plan. And we want to make sure that with the public engagement, that the Planning Commission is playing a central role in this process. So we're not just coming to you with updates, but we want to use this body to kind of review the plan in depth, the code in depth as we develop it. Even now, a lot of the entitlements and things that come to the city actually are processed mysteriously by staff. And with the states and city council emphasis on streamlined, that's probably going to continue. But this is an opportunity for the council to, or the council and the Planning Commission to kind of shape the rules that will influence development for the future, even if that is not going to come to the Planning So Phase One, in those housing standards, is also, you know, our laws on ADUs and SB9. And there's a lot of work that will go into those things. And those are items that are processed at the staff level now, but there might be a ton of confusion or similar in the community. So an opportunity to look at those and other priority items, not related to housing, but somewhat include driveway expansions. There's things like cannabis. And there are other priority actions that have been identified or could be identified that we can look at that really are about amending our current code. Phase Two is kind of still dealing with our current zoning code. And especially when the general plan gets updated, there'll be a big amendment package to bring those documents into consistency with each other. And finally, Phase Three, which is the longest phase, but it's really starting now, is looking at a whole new zoning code. And what shape that takes really depends on direction from the community, from council, from you all. But we've been tasked with moving forward towards a new zoning code that is easier to use for the public, for staff, that streamlines the kind of design the community needs and wants to see, and is more objective in its standards. With that, I'll turn it over to Son for future growth area updates. Obviously, I'll be sticking around for the questions and answers after the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners, Son Fam Galardo. And I'm going to talk about future growth area. Thank you for the slide here. Let's try here. Okay. So has shown and illustrated here is all the future growth area. And it includes the west, central area-specific plans, and also the east area, and how it integrates with the city boundaries. The city have received three tentative maps, submittals for the west area-specific plans. Mortenson and Mandaloria submitted back in May, two thousand and twenty-five, and it was deemed incomplete. They have resubmitted a couple of weeks ago, back in early September. Bonnison submitted for their first tentative map about the first week of September as well. And Herod has only submitted a preliminary application back in two thousand and twenty-four. And this is for the west area-specific plan. This is for the central area-specific plan. We have two tentative maps, submittals. They are Christensen and East Bronda LLC, also known as Probert and Cordial, shown on the right. This has been approved. And this is the only map that has been approved so far as part of the future growth area. The Appian has also submitted a site plan review for the thirty-eight multifamily units on parcel one seventy-seven. And this is indicated on the bottom of the map. That is shown has the white border, the square bordered on the bottom of the map here. Also, the Christensen tentative map has been deemed incomplete and have not submitted. And a letter was sent out from city staff back in June of this year. So they have not resubmitted since then. Lastly, this is the east area. I just want to make a notation. It states here is a specific plan, but there is not a specific plan for the east area. So this is a Barden subdivision that has been submitted for tentative map. And Barden is on the east area plan, which does not have a specific plan. And city staff is working on a specific plan. City staff is also working with the environmental analysis. That is part of the SEQA analysis, which is, stands for the California Environment Quality Act. And that was done, the tentative map was submitted part of the two thousand and twenty-four. And we are on the second submittal for the consistency review. So there are multiple steps in terms of the SBE three thirty submittal. And then to date, we have seven subdivisions that have been submitted. And we have a total of approximately three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two units. And that is, that pretty much wraps up with what we have so far. And in terms of units, we're looking at single-family dwellings, townhomes, condos, and duplexes. And that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to, before we go right into the questions, I had something I wanted to share with the Commissioners. So since this is venturing into a little bit of a new process for us, we've kind of just been sitting on the sideline waiting for things to be presented to the Planning Commission. And now with the prospect of sharing with staff of new things that we can be more effective as a commission that involve, you know, the list that was given to us of ideas, of, you know, many training, are there study sessions we want to do, you know, different things that will allow us to be a more effective commission and reaching out to the community, bringing in the public. So I just had done a little research this morning because it was on my mind of, you know, what are my thoughts or feelings about all this after reviewing our packet? And I found on the public meeting agendas and materials, we have description for Planning Commission. It says, "The Planning Commission promotes and ensures the comprehensive and adequate planning of the city. The commission approves, conditionally approves, or disapproves applications for conditional use permits or zoning variances that do not meet the criteria for consideration by the Community Development Director. The Planning Commission makes recommendations regarding the approval or disapproval of subdivision maps and land use and zoning plans." So then, you know, it kind of just brought to mind my thought of, okay, that first sentence is really important, you know. And I feel like in my past of being on the commission, we haven't really had much opportunity to do this well. And that, so repeating that, I went in AI, you know, kind of the way to go nowadays, to get an idea. And so what I'm going to read off here is what AI came up with, with the statement of what our Planning Commission has been tasked with. So Planning Commission promotes and ensures adequate planning by serving as an advisory body to the city council, creating and implementing a long-term vision for the city and providing a forum for public engagement. This process helps manage growth, protects property values, and ensures development alliance with community goals. Core functions of a Planning Commission: Develops and updates the general plan. The general plan or master plan is a foundational document that outlines the long-range vision for the city's growth and development. The Planning Commission is responsible for assisting city staff in writing and amending the general plan, holding public hearings to gather community feedback on the plan and potential changes, recommending the plan and its updates to the city council for final adoption. Number two, implement zoning and land use regulations. The commission translates the broad policies of the general plan into specific enforceable regulations through zoning ordinances. This includes reviewing and recommending zoning ordinances and map amendments to the city council, considering individual projects such as conditional use permits, variances, and subdivisions to ensure that they are consistent with the general plan and zoning code, making decisions or recommendations on development applications for new constructions and remodels. Number three, guides future development. Planning Commissions manage and direct future growth and land use by creating more detailed area-specific plans and assessing capital improvements. Specific and area plans, they assist in the creation of detailed plans for specific neighborhoods and districts within the city. Capital Improvement Plan: The commission reviews the city's annual CIP and proposed public works projects to ensure they are consistent with the general plan. Number four, facilitates public involvement. Planning Commissions provide a vital platform for public participation, ensuring that community's voice is heard through the planning process. Host public meetings: They hold public meetings on proposals to gather input from residents, business owners, and other stakeholders. Promote engagement: They consult with public agencies, utility companies, and civic organizations to promote public interest in and understanding of the city's plans. Number five, acts as an advisory and appellate body. As an appointed board of volunteers, the commission acts in an advisory capacity to the elected city council, advises the council. The commission makes recommendations on all land use and development issues, acts as a decision-making body. For many project proposals, the commission's decision can be final unless it is appealed by the city council. And lastly, number six, coordinates with other agencies. The commission works to coordinate the city's planning efforts with those of other government agencies at the local, regional, and state levels. This collaborative approach helps create cohesive and efficient regional development. Now, and then in the sheet, it has all the references. And I know this isn't exactly us, but I thought it was a really well ideal of where we would want to be. And a lot of these steps, I realize some of our, you know, are pointed to the staff, you know, which is great. But I think that we need to remind ourselves of the overall responsibility. And so when we're thinking and making suggestions as Commissioners to the city staff of what we want to see moving forward, you know, that we can keep those things in mind. And listening to our constituents, maybe opening this up into, you know, more invitation of a regular basis of something of training, you know, how to, how to apply for permits. I mean, you can go down the line. But I'd really like to see through this process, a calendar out, you know, of what, what's our overall kind of brainstorm? And then what do we want to see over the course of time? So people can plan for that. And if they want to attend. And lastly, I really think this is a great opportunity to work together more cohesively. And us recording on, you know, YouTube and all that, we can reference these things. So when people are asking us, well, how do I do this? Oh, we had a study session on that. You should review it on YouTube. So that city staff isn't always getting a lot of these questions over and over and over, you know, that we have some point of reference to help if we assign some types of training. So anyway, that was my input. And Commissioner Rakamora, do you have any questions or suggestions for the staff?
No, I totally agree with you. You know, as an appointed commissioner from our respective council member, you know, we do make decisions up here. We vote. You know, we are the voice of the people. My wife once said, you know, don't you work with the city? No, I work for the people. And, you know, getting more information to us, just like we talked about here, we just need more information. Because if I don't know it, I usually go on Google. I Google it. So when I get all the information we have, I'll Google most. But to me, I think we just need more, a little bit more information on if we're basically going to make a decision for the city. Because, you know, there's a lot of stuff that does come through here. I could only speak from most of the residents. The residents do talk to me about it, that know that I'm one of the Commissioners. And that's why you do hear me speak a lot, is mainly from hearing them. And I do correct some of the residents that they don't know, just like we talk about future growth. It was talked about in the city council about everybody's complaining about our sewage system. Well, if we don't fix our sewage system, you know, it's a big hit. But if we don't have a good sewage system, we cannot build anything. And I think that needs to go out to the residents so they know. Because you see people on social media saying, why are they spending money? Why are they charging us on this? Why can't we use, you know, do something else with that? But, you know, the fight is rent stabilization. We don't have no housing. We can't build without proper drainage, sewage. So I think we do need to go out there and tell the residents, look, it hasn't been touched for many years. And see, this is the information that I just found out. And I didn't know until, you know, I started speaking to some of the staff members saying, well, you can't build without a good sewage system. And our sewage system hasn't been touched for many years. And now it's failing. And we're going to be, you know, just right here, we're going to be building over three thousand homes. Is that going to sustain, is our sewage just going to be able to sustain that three thousand nine hundred homes? So the residents got to know. That way, it's not one-sided, we're dividing the city. We need to all work together. And from that, thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Meeks?
Thanks for having a comment on this. And if you pay attention to the news, it seems like other cities close to us have much greater authority than we're given. They're making decisions, especially if you take a look at Santa Cruz, they have a lot more authority. A lot more comes to them than we ever see. That's the end of my comment.
Commissioner Ruck?
Okay, comments first, is that correct?
Questions or comments, who's final?
Well, first of all, some, some cities, some counties, give the Planning Commission more authority. Like advises the council, this commission does not make recommendations on all land use development issues. It doesn't. There's a lot of admin permits that occur, and this commission doesn't see them. So I think that that might be a little bit of misnomer, people wondering, well, how did that get approved? It didn't come here. It still got approved. There are things that are done internally. And we would see an appeal, but not necessarily that permit. So I think this is good, and I thank you for it. Also, I have a bunch of questions. So whenever you're ready, I'm going to launch in. Okay. I think this is a little confusing. Some of these are incomplete, and I did not catch any comments on whether or not they plan on resubmitting if they're incomplete. Has anybody said they're going to resubmit an incomplete tentative map?
Through the chair? So I hope so. Because the application fees, they have paid for the application fees. And there's been a lot of communications back and forth with regards to resubmittals. So we're hoping that they will resubmit.
Okay, because this one is almost two years old. And that's the proposed, I guess, Probert? It's almost two years old. And I, you know, kind of wonder, are they going to resubmit? I know that they have to pay fees upfront. I do understand that. But do you think they're planning on resubmitting?
So the one you're referring to is that Herod? Yeah, so Herod is at their preliminary application. So they haven't submitted for the tentative map yet. But they're in the, so we have to determine whether or not they're vesting. So at that point, they're at the preliminary application. They haven't submitted for the tentative map. But most of these have been in the, they already wanted to vest in this subdivision. And so
Okay.
we anticipate that they're going to submit.
Okay, thank you. Because I was just wondering, you know, I know they have to pay the fees upfront. Let's go back to the zoning code and the general plan update.
I would have Jonathan discuss that. If you have any other questions regarding the future growth area with regards to the maps, I could answer those.
No, I don't have any more questions on the future growth areas. Just, I hope they resubmit. I do hope they get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ruck, could I add a point of, so on the applications that are currently incomplete, my understanding is that each one of them has been resubmitted. They're all in play again right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think three of them in current planning and one in advanced planning. All four tentative maps are currently resubmitted, if I'm not mistaken.
For the tentative map, yes. Just the preliminary. Just the preliminary one with Herod has not been.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I have a question on general plan update timeline and the zoning update timeline. If we have three or four maps that are in process, they haven't been deemed complete yet, but we're moving forward with the general plan, if they are not vesting tentative maps, that could potentially affect those maps if we adopt a new general plan and they're not vesting tentative maps, what do you see happening?
The intent, at least, is to let them play out under their adopted specific plans and the previous general plan. So even the current draft general plan for west and central area, the place types, the land uses for those areas, basically just say, see adopted specific plan. So the intent is not to change the, is not to pull the rug out from under them so they should be stable. And even in the east area, they submitted everything so that they were vested under the 2002 general plan. They wanted to play by those rules, so everyone is, is kind of getting around that. And I know we have a couple like, we had the Farasi specific plan under Works Two for the area to the northwest. So if, if those are coming in now, they should be covered under that, so.
That's good. So it won't affect them, basically. Yeah, okay, that's good because I wondered about that. And then I, I do wonder, what is a zoning code audit?
It's just a review of, of the zoning code for other, you know, housing has been the big thing, but for any other legal areas where it might need to be updated for state or federal law compliance.
Okay. Question on the zoning code update, multi-phase approach. We're going from fall of 2025 to the fall of 2027. What impacts do you think that timeline might have?
Well, that's where we're trying to chunk it up a little bit. Because we're, well, one, we're trying to do some stuff now ahead of the general plan even, so some of these phase one updates are related to things we said we would do for our current code under the housing element that would carry over, even though they're a little different in the eventual full review. And then the phase two is always so that when we have a new general plan and we adopt it, we don't have a four or five-year period of inconsistency, which might happen with this because I think, I don't know if the difference between the 2002 general plan and whatever the zoning code was then, maybe there wasn't that much difference, so they could take their time in, in completing that update. But with some new state laws and stuff now, we want to make sure there is something there to be at least consistent with each other while we come up with the new zoning code. And long-term, we said it might look, it might look a lot different from what we have now. It might be very similar with tweaks to what we have now, depending on the direction we go, but the multi-phase approach is to try to get us to a place where we don't have a big gap of inconsistency or, or blankness between those two projects.
Okay, thank you. And then my only other comments, and yeah, I'm long-winded, sorry. And I really think that we should look at the old general plan to know where we're going with the new one. I think we should look at the zoning code to know where we're going with the user-friendly one. And the subdivision map act, since we have these maps coming at us, might be, it might behoove us to know a little bit about the subdivision map act for people who don't know the subdivision map act and CEQA. And CEQA has some reforms this past year and what's the applicability of those forms to some of these maps, if there is any? And, and I think that's a good thing. And I think having a facilities update or overview might help also understanding how these new maps, housing, whatever you want to call them, dovetail into the facilities that we already have so those can be sort of moved off the table if necessary or move forward if necessary and aren't a distraction to get the housing up. That's my comments.
Thank you. And I have a few items on my list. The first thing you had mentioned, the joint study session we had June 10th, 2025. We appreciated your time on that. I've been requesting from commission to have minutes from that and they have not been available still on the website. I think that I, I'm really concerned about the message it sends as far as people that were not able to attend, the information that was shared, you know, was suggested. It's not documented and I don't understand why, when you go on the website still, because I just double-checked again this morning to make sure I wasn't speaking incorrectly, but it still just says it is not available. So do we have an update? I think that's one of you.
Yes, I, I reached out to the clerk's office yesterday and my understanding is that the clerk will be reaching out to you with a, a response.
So I guess one, my question then for staff was, you know, when we do these things and for going forward with these trainings and study sessions, you know, what is your debriefing process internally for how you address these things?
I have to defer someone to Lisa and Courtney. It's really like this session's a new process and even the joint study session, we haven't done a ton of those. So I mean, I did not communicate with our city clerk office on timing of minutes or anything like that, but it seems like it's something we need to look at in the future, how we debrief on these, how we make sure that we get a timely update on minutes and those kind of things.
Yeah, for the regular planning commission meetings and, and study sessions, we do document just as we do with community meetings, there are minutes or notes that are being taken that are then consolidated if they're small group conversations or the multiple points of view, we group them into topics so that we can see the varying points of view and then we discuss how it can be integrated or addressed depending on what the topic or comment is.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is about Placeworks. So this is an, who is Placeworks? Why did you go with them?
Placeworks is a planning consulting firm. They're well-known in California, so a long track record. Been around since at least the seventies under, I think they started under a different name, but they've been helping us too with the climate action plan, with portions of our general plan. They started as just our, our EIR and cap consultant, so we've sought to do a lot of this in-house and they've kind of stepped in to help us with some of the general plan things as we've gone along here.
And, and just to add, if I may, through the chair, they were selected through a, a procurement process. We did release a request for proposal for all the planning activities that we're doing for the general plan, the environmental, the climate action plan, and the zoning code and as well as our east area specific plan preparation. So it has all been put out to planning firms to respond with proposals and through a rating and ranking as well as interview process, they were selected as the consultant.
Okay, thank you. And then, so as far as the zoning code and things that concern the commission, is there a plan for us to do a study session with them for our questions, input?
Yep.
I mean, was that, is that part of what they're designed to be doing?
Yep, that is. I mentioned the, one of their first tasks. So they're scheduled to meet with the planning commission at least once during each of the phases and the first one will be kind of a, a study session, for lack of a better term, but on some of those, the housing laws, but also on some of that guidance from the planning commission, the direction, what their, their goals are with us, what they want to see, what questions they have. So we'll build that into that session as well. I don't have a date for that yet, but I know we're going to be sitting there with Lisa and Courtney to start mapping things out and we'll can get in touch with them.
Do you have an idea, like, would it be this year or like, or 2027?
Lisa is saying, yep, so yeah, we'll.
We have a big range here.
It needs to be. It needs to be this year. And a preliminary step is, is really everyone, planning commission and city council getting on the same page as to what the community engagement strategy is, what it looks like, who, you know, how are stakeholders identified, what is their participation, identifying a technical advisory committee and all that. You know, the community engagement plan will also be brought before the planning commission as well as then to the city council for input and, and refinement.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, my other question, or this may be more of a comment, but I mentioned before having a calendar, if we can, you know, continue to brainstorm on that and just have it preset, you know, so that we have it where we're not losing our momentum with all of that?
We're meeting tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, awesome.
Based on the conversation today to chart it out through the end of the year.
Okay, good. And then community engagement was kind of a high point for me. I think that, I'll share a little thing. So we have a sister city out there that's posted, Guanajuato, Mexico, and I'm in the downtown Rotary Club and there's something, when I first joined, Lucy Pizarro, another Rotarian, and also she owns Chappala's Restaurant here in Salinas. She came to the club and she said, I want to do a project with between the two Rotary Clubs, which we tend to do in Rotary because you do international project and locally. And the club was, you know, very supportive and said, just tell us what you need. And when she spoke to that, the, you know, the people in the area that she had contact with, they shared how far these children had to walk. There was not enough schools and they're, they're, you know, carrying all these heavy books for two miles plus and, you know, so she came to the club and said, I'd like to, us to fundraise to do backpacks. So she got all these backpacks, they towed them down to Mexico and she's handing them out. So her report back though was just, thank you, thank you. But my heart was wrenching because as we're handing out these backpacks, some of them didn't have shoes. They had very worn shoes. And she realized when we have this preview like this, we're, we're seeing what we think is great. And she realized they probably needed the shoes more than the backpack. So of course she'd had a second ask, but that has always stuck with me. And I think that when we have that community engagement and the public contribution, that helps widen our view, you know, and it doesn't, we don't, you know, it's, it's what do you hear kind of consistently, but you know, and where are they coming from when they're sharing these things? You know, we all have different perspectives, different backgrounds in, in what we do for a living. So that is a really big deal for me. And community engagement, and I know from the beginning, I was at those first meetings when we started the general plan and there's hardly anybody there, I know it's improved. So you guys have done a great job of improving that, but we definitely need to, you know, do our great job at that, you know? And then the other thing was, when I was reading that introduction of what the planning commission was responsible for and it, when it says, oh, it's even on my sheet here, promotes and ensures the comprehensive and adequate planning of the city. So this is, that, this isn't the AI, this is what our city has on their website. I really feel like we, this whole thing with housing, so when, you know, I get the comment, you know, you know, what, what is the planning commission doing with rental registration and rental stabilization, those ordinances? And, you know, I have to respond, well, we don't have anything to do with that. But I feel, I've always felt weird responding that way. And of course their perception is, why aren't you planning commission? And we don't have ourselves structured like a lot of other cities. So I'm wondering why, and I would like one of the study sessions to be, what I have seen in the past is that we had a lot of committees and so the, the inch, the activities were at a committee level before they even went to the city. And so when they came in, it was more packaged and that helped streamline it. And then you didn't need planning, you know, it was supposed to not burden the staff like I think it is now. And so I, I think that if we look back on, why did we do it like that before? Why did we remove so many things and go administratively? We may find we want to tweak some things. So I'd like a study session on that. And then I wanted to ask Courtney, if you could share about the state, this is something really important that I think is a perception from a lot of people, including some of the commissioners when they make their comments about, you called it the streamlining process, but when we are asked to make an approval on something and, and commissioners will ask, well, what about this, what about that? And it's like, that'll be handled down the line. And I think that if you can explain when the state, you know, when they changed their streamlining process and now we're making decisions more compartmentalized instead of it, and then we are having to make a different decision down the line, like if you could share a little bit about that?
Sure. And that could very well be a topic under the subdivision map act or something for a future study session, but there have been a number of Housing Crisis Act of 2019 legislation bills that have gone through the state legislature. One of them, one of the more common ones that, that we see in our processing of tentative maps here at the city is SB 330. SB 330 changes the way in which maps are processed. In, in days previous to SB 330, there would be a submittal, a 30-day review, and then once complete, 50 days to get to planning commission and council. It was pretty straightforward. And that would apply to those projects which are subject to a certified EIR and an adopted specific plan, which is the majority of the, the processing here in current planning. That doesn't apply to what's happening in the east area where there is no specific plan. That's a whole nother discussion item. So that's how the processing was done before. Once complete, then the shot clock ticks 50 days to, to hearing. With SB 330, it's a little different. It's a little bit, I guess, I hate to use the word convoluted, but in my opinion, it is somewhat convoluted. There are a number of, of, of steps that, that have to be taken. One of them includes a pre-application process and that's where the, essentially where kickoff occurs. Pre-application is the beginning point for SB 330. Once that application is submitted, my understanding is that a formal application must be submitted within 180 days to the city. Once that happens, the formal application, then there is the 30-day review, but now it's where it starts to change. There's a couple of back and forths. There's, there's a 90-day requirement for the developer to resubmit once the 30-day review letter goes out. And that can circulate through a number of cycles, I think three of them, and then there could be an appeal to bring it forward to the planning commission if there's a disagreement on completeness. Once complete, the state has decided to remove the policy part or the consistency part from the map from the completeness. So completeness is more or less now, do they have a map? Do they have an application? Do they pay a fee? Now with consistency being separate, which we typically group together, it's different now. This starts a whole nother timeline of process of 60 days. And I didn't map out the rest of it, but once that parts or portion plays out, then eventually we will get to planning commission and to council. And, and that is where we, I don't think we're even there yet with these maps. We're still going through completeness. I think maybe one of them is in consistency now, I think one of them is, which is in the east area, but the current planning items are still in completeness from my understanding.
Okay, so yeah, and the reason why I wanted that to be explained is because I think sometimes we think this is a Salinas city rule, you know, and, and understanding that allows us to be a little more creative with, okay, how, what do we want to do then to Band-Aid? That's not, you know, the best process maybe. I'm sure they have their, like my story I just shared, you know, their, their point of view. But I think it is important to understand, you know, so people aren't sitting there going, what are you, you know, why are we going in this order? Why, why don't we have this information yet? You know, that it's not all us, you know, as far as city and staff. So, okay, thank you. And then so, and I started my comment on the rental registration. So when I, when I do look at that about the, the adequate planning of the city and we're going into all these zoning laws and, and the overlapping of several of these agencies, what Commissioner Rakamora had said, we need the information. I mean, we need these things presented to us. We need to be involved, you know, for us to do what we've been appointed to do. And I think that even though we don't always, we do sometimes make recommendations, you know, to city council, but our appointed person is our city councilman and, or woman and we are reporting to them. So even if, and we have, you know, one here, but it's like, they are still getting the information based on what planning commission is recommending. You know, so I just want to point that out, that I think the more you involve us, the better. We have a very great commission right now and everybody's kind of waiting, like we want to get involved and be more a part of this. We are, you know, doing this for our community. We do represent the public, you know, so we appreciate you involving us in this and starting up this process, you know, really appreciate it. Okay.
Madam Chair, may I?
Sure.
Add on? Okay. And that's a very good point because a gentleman came up earlier, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, excuse me, and, you know, wondering how these three committees are going to work together. There is the Housing Land Use Committee. I don't know what they're doing. There's a report out there, I could grab it on my way out, but then an ad hoc committee. But then an ad hoc committee, I wasn't aware of that. I don't know what they're doing either. And it would be good if we did because, well, it brings more people into the fold, A, and it gives us more information to think about. And I think that's a good thing. So you brought that up. I mean, everybody needs to know what everybody else is doing in order for everybody to do the job for the community.
Right.
It's not for us, it's for the community. And I think it's a very good point. We sort of need to know what's going on and maybe that's incumbent upon us that we come to all these different hearings, but it would be nice if somehow reports could be generated so that we didn't come to every hearing. I'm not sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so now we're open for public comment on this item. Are there any comments from the public regarding this item? And I did have a request for three minutes, since there's just a couple of people speaking, we'll allow for it.
How many minutes?
Three minutes, yeah. I want it for, for all, not just the one.
Peter Zaline, North Salinas. So three, three questions. The state is doing all sorts of things. They're going through different ideas and from the news you hear about maybe reducing some of the SEQA type of considerations and allowing.
Could you use a microphone?
And allowing more density, high-density developments. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
And I know that when they did some work on ADUs, some of that came down to the city pretty quickly and we were able to implement those changes here and take advantage and to allow people to build ADUs. I was one of them. So I guess my question is, are we going to be on top of whatever changes that are coming down from Sacramento that we can take advantage of to benefit our own issues here? The next question I would have would be on multi-family dwellings, apartment buildings, high-density buildings. Everything that I saw over here talked about single-family homes. I don't know whether the great need in Salinas for housing is single-family homes. If we're going to build a lot of $800,000 or million-dollar homes, I don't know if that's going to meet the need of what we have here, of the people who live here. And the last thing is, I didn't see anything about infill opportunities. There are places in town that are vacant. I don't exactly know what the planning commission does to encourage housing on those places, but it seems that that could be part of a look, a plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon. Chairman McKelvey, commissioners, thank you for your service. My name is Peter Cassavan. I'm the president of the Salinas Planning and Research Corporation, also known as Spark. It was Spark that conceived and established the Salinas Regional Soccer Complex. That effort was led by our vice president Alfred Diaz Infante and our treasurer Warren Whalen. Our success in unifying the community and this vision led city manager Ray Corpus to call on Spark to lead a community outreach effort for the economic development element for the city's general plan. Having worked with them on the soccer complex, we engaged COPA as a partner in this effort and we also opened this to collaboration with building healthy communities. This was the broadest and most authentic community engagement in the history of the central coast and created an EDE that was effectively written by the community and explicitly represented the community values and vision. We heard from a shareholder in the Alice Al that this was the first time the city had ever asked him what he wanted. At a workshop presenting draft language, I overheard a group saying, they listened to us. Twenty-six individuals stood up at the council meeting and spoke in favor of the EDE. One speaker pointed to a specific item and bragged, I wrote that. No individual spoke in opposition. The EDE went on to win three planning awards, including two statewide planning awards. The city is now engaged in an update to the EDE. At an early workshop, I'm sharing what I know today. At an early workshop, they shared their draft EDE update as a fully formed document, which would require the community's EDE to be repealed and replaced and the EDE removed from the general plan. Members of the community expressed resistance, but the city manager intervened and he said he understood the value of the EDE and would not be eliminating it and emphasized that he supports community engagement. The community wrote the EDE. Spark believes the community should write the update as well. Spark re-engaged the community, including COPA. We were again grateful for the city manager who authorized and enabled our efforts. Our formal EDE update draft was submitted to the city manager on August 1st. We appreciate Jonathan's slide that indicated and acknowledged Spark and the shareholders would have some continuing conversation about that. I wanted to emphasize that the EDE and the general plan is legislative in nature. It requires this type of community outreach for general plan updates and for zoning code updates. Quoting from the EDE, "Continue to actively engage the type of community outreach utilized in the economic development element process to update the general plan and zoning code updates. I request the planning commission to support the following. Preserve the community's EDE as approved and as updated by the shareholders as part of the general plan and immediately engage the community in the zoning code update as well, implemented in good faith. The same broad and authentic process used to create the EDE as required in that document to ensures it represents the community's vision and values." And by the way, that should have started already. I've handed out examples of what community engagement looks like. And these people were all there at the table and wrote, wrote the, wrote the EDE. That's the way we should be approaching the zoning ordinance as well, per the requirements of the existing approved EDE. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others for public comment? Do we have any with a raised hand on Zoom?
No raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, we will now close the public comment on this item. Are there any additional questions and comments from the commissioners to members of city staff? Commissioner Rakamora?
No other questions, comments?
Commissioner Meeks?
One comment, this would make a great mission theme. If we don't have one, which I've never seen.
Commissioner what? Oh, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Mission statement.
Oh, mission statement.
Your job is what it should be. Thank you.
Commissioner Ruck?
None, thank you.
And I have no other questions or comments. I just wanted to thank staff for all of your, you know, hard work and also engaging with us because we've been excited to want to do this for a while and I look forward to how we'll come together, working together. Thank you. And then for public hearings, we have, it says none scheduled?
That would be correct.
Other business, general plan steering committee update.
Again, once the public review draft is released, we will re-engage with the steering committee to work with them to go through the public review draft, obtain their comments, as well as re-engage the community as we bring it forward.
Okay, would that be with the consultants? Would they be included there or is it still just steering committee?
With the general plan, it would be staff working with the participants of the steering committee as well as leading broader community engagement regarding the draft plan.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up reports. I had that item, the joint study session, asking for the minutes from June 10th, but you said that they're going to reach out?
My understanding that is what the clerk told me yesterday, but we can put that back on the agenda.
Okay.
Should you desire.
Yes, I think until resolved or we have an answer on that, we should show it publicly too, because it's been in our meeting several times now. And then anybody else have something for follow-up reports, questions?
I just have one for the city. On our joint session, we talked about permitting center, that they were shorthanded and we were talking about streamlining the permitting process and you're saying that you guys are shorthanded, you're going to be filling this, has those been filled?
I am pleased to report yes. Since the beginning of the year, we have filled 11 permit center positions. So we have a new combo one inspector, a new combo two inspector. We also hired an additional permit clerk, permit tech, senior plan check reviewer, as well as we have candidates that are interviewing for our plan checker two position, one and two position. So I'm pleased to say we've made a lot of progress in filling vacancies in the permit center.
Good. And one last question is, how's the permitting process going? Is it moving better?
Yes, yes. So we, on a bi-weekly basis, we have a coordination meeting and we look at the data in terms of the number of building permits coming in, the number of permits that are being approved, where they're at in the review cycle. We have conversations if there are sticking points cross-departementally, we reach out to the applicants to help them move forward. So yes, I would say the process, given the volume, we are moving forward. We still are having to rely a lot on outside consultants, given the volume and complexity, but overall, we are, yes, making progress.
Thank you.
What about enforcement? Didn't mention any.
Code enforcement, I am super excited as well. As of next Monday, we will be 100% staffed, 100% staffed. So we have hired, we promoted two code enforcement, one positions to code enforcement two. We hired a new from outside code enforcement two officer that starts next Monday and we have filled the code one positions that were promoted. So I'm very, very excited. And we also, as of September, kicked off a new rotating schedule in which we are adjusting hours so that officers are working in teams to work after hours and weekends to do more proactive enforcement. So more specifics to come. Happy to provide more update. We will be going to the council, but we are, are definitely making progress in those areas, getting the staffing resources and outlining the strategy.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Madam Chair, a situation that comes up once in a while. Do we, does anybody keep a running attendance for the commissioners? It seems we're always saying, well, you know, what are we going to do about this person that's never here, but we had nothing in writing?
Well, I think we do. There was, at least when I started, I thought I read something that said how many you were basically needed to attend to stay active.
But do we track that?
Well, I know.
Myra, can you speak to that? Myra, Myra tracks attendance?
I'll be in a minute.
What is the question?
The question is, do you keep a log of attendance? Other than?
Are you asking for tracking or for enforcement?
Well, yeah, both. You've got to track it before you can enforce it.
Yes, there is a log that we keep. So after every meeting, I go back and I update that tracking log and there is a quarterly report that goes to the city clerk's office, who then shares this information with the city council. Appointments are made at the city council discretion and that's also to remove any planning commissioners that are not in attendance. The bylaws indicate that 75% attendance is required, so of all special and regularly scheduled meetings. So if it falls below that threshold, I do not wait until the following quarterly report is due, I submit it to the clerk's office.
It's the first time I've heard that explained to me or brought to my attention in 14 years. Thank you.
Yes, and this is something that Courtney covers at every orientation when planning commissioners join.
I'm sure Commissioner Meeks recalls that.
14 years ago, yeah.
Yes, I've got it written down somewhere, too.
And then, yeah, so kind of to add to that, we're, you know, like we usually do, asking for attendance for the next meeting, but the goal with some of this, you know, engagement is to make sure that even if we don't have business, that we are meeting. So we should all be planning to attend all of the upcoming planning commission meetings that are scheduled, regularly scheduled, for sure. And if there's no other feature or follow-up reports, future agenda items, sorry, I think I was skipping over.
Yeah, I don't have anything scheduled for the next meeting, so as, as Lisa mentioned, we'll be huddling and putting together a presentation for the next meeting.
Okay, and so our next meeting is scheduled for October 1st, 2025. By raise of hands, can you attend?
I have chemotherapy Friday, but I have 19 days to recover, so I should be.
You should be good, yeah.
Yes, I'll be here.
And then Myra will reach out to the other commissioners. All right, thank you. With that, the meeting is adjourned.